Another sunny spring day. Highs this afternoon in the low 60s to low 70s. Pullman 64, 70 in Lewiston with partly cloudy skies. Expect overnight lows.
Didn't she knock? She closed the door. Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Lamar and I'm the Chair of the Moscow City Council Administrative Committee. It's 3:00 PM on Monday, April 14th, and we are getting started. We have a very full agenda, so we're going to move right along. Today, of course, with me is City Council members Wayne Kraus and John Weber. And our staff supervision is led by Gary Redner, the City Supervisor. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the March 24th, 2014 minutes.
Second.
Okay, we're going to approve those. I am entertaining a motion to amend our agenda for today as there's an item that was inadvertently left off. It's a presentation and a request by the Leitak County Historical Society.
So moved.
So.
Yep.
Okay. We have those people here, so I want to make sure that we can add that. So we'll add that to the end of the agenda, so that'll be item number seven.
And that requires a good faith reason. A good faith reason is that we had it scheduled in. For some reason, it dropped off our agenda system. But Earl and his folks are here today. It's a non-controversial topic, and we're just looking for guidance from the council.
And that's my understanding.
Yes, that's fine.
That's what we all three understand. All right. Great. Okay, so the second item on the agenda is the Moscow Charter School Rental Fee waiver request for 2014, 2015 school year use of the HERC with Dwight Curtis in front of us.
Yeah. Well, good afternoon. With me I have Tony Bonacelli. He's the Principal of the Moscow Charter School.
Welcome.
And they are requesting a rental fee waiver of the use of the HERC. This is something they've done for several years now. This would be for next school year, 2014, '15. And typically, what we use is half the gym. The other half is open to the public. It has not been an issue with the public in the past or our programs. And for this next year, they are requesting an additional 36 hours. That's, I don't know, it's like 40 minutes a week or every two days or something like that. They've added on the eighth grade into their program, and I don't see that that would be an issue for us either. And also Charter School has a reciprocal arrangement with us. If we need to use their facility for programs, they would allow us to do that. And I don't know if Tony has anything he wants to add, or...
Do I need to say my name and address, or...
Please, yeah.
Okay. Tony Bonacelli, Moscow Charter School Principal, 1723 East F Street. This is my second, or this is my first year. We're heading into the second year, and that's why I wanted to figure out all my scheduling and make sure that we went through the correct motions. Again, with, like Mr. Curtis said, it's reciprocal. You know, if at any time they need to use it, we definitely appreciate being able to use the HERC. It's a great facility. We make sure that we have adequate staff that are going to make sure that our, the facility's well taken care of, and so...
John, do you have any?
The only thing I agree with it, and quite frankly, the movement that we're getting going with ball fields and other areas of younger children, recreation and sporting activity, I think it would behoove us. And since it's worked in the past as well, as Dwight said, I'm in favor.
It's exciting to see kids get active and get physical and have that be a regular part of their education.
Yeah, this is, I don't know how many years we've been doing this. It's, I don't know, three, four, five, six, it's been quite a while. And it's great. It doesn't have a positive problem in the HERC and scheduling, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, let's move that forward to the consent agenda then. Gary, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is the community branding issue with Jen Pfiffner. She's the Assistant to the City Supervisor and Gina Trushko, the Moscow Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Thank you.
Hello, thank you.
Good afternoon.
This is the second time you've heard a report on this particular project. We're looking at the community branding project, and that's a partnership between the City of Moscow, the Moscow Chamber of Commerce and the University of Idaho. We've reported on this and let you know sometime in March that we'd be bringing back the request for proposals as we look at finding a consultant to help us with this community branding project. This project would help Moscow to define as a community kind of a definition of who we are and what we want to portray to the many audiences that we have available to us. For instance, tourism issues, recruitment issues, economic development, those kinds of things, so. In your packets was the request for proposals. We also received today a letter from the University of Idaho supporting or outlining their commitment of $10,000 to the project to get us going. Part of the request today is to ask for a formal recommendation for $10,000 from the City of Moscow, something that we had discussed last month when you presented this earlier, that we would be bringing that forward.
Yes, I have a comment about that as well.
Yes, please.
Where we typically would fund this, we do have flexibility in legislative budget non-prioritized projects. We have $22,000 that was budgeted by the council last year. Out of that $22,000, the council has verbally committed $2,500 to the Palouse Knowledge Corridor being the entrepreneur boot camp, which leaves it in 19-5. The reason it was typically that line item is budgeted around $10,000 to $14,000, depending upon things that the council thinks they might come up throughout the year. This year, it was for, to assure that we had sufficient funds to purchase some farmer's market banners. Talked to Tyler a little bit about the cost, the expected cost of those. Still milling around, but it looks like those will be around $16,000. We do have some other funding that we might be able to tap for that. $10,000 were to be allocated out of the non-prioritized projects, and that would leave about $9,500 in there to go toward that banner-type program. We also have some money in strategic planning that hasn't been tapped this year, at least not very much. So there's sufficient flexibility. From the council's comments, or committee's comments a couple of weeks ago, they indicated that they would look toward matching the University of Idaho's commitment of $10,000, which is why we're bringing that to you today.
Wayne.
How much of strategic planning?
How much is left? I suspect there will be $15,000 or maybe a little more. Depends how much strategic planning we get done toward the end of this year in accordance with the council's goals.
My understanding was we wanted to get this strategic planning process completed this year so we could start moving into doing that next year. Don't we need all that money to do that?
Well, actually, we will be re-proposing funding in the FY 2015 budget because we don't, we'll probably have some preliminary costs, but we won't start the official planning process until after October 1st in the beginning of the FY 2015 budget, which is what we presented in the goal setting. It'll be this calendar year, but it'll be in next budget year.
And this $50,000, this is strictly to hire the consultant?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
$50,000 in the proposal.
The overall project.
Right.
Yes.
So there would have to be $30,000 beyond the city and the university.
And that $30,000 is coming from the chamber?
Yes, sir. Our tourism grant.
I think we're all in the wrong business.
You and I are thinking the same way. I'm thinking like... How long is this going to take to get this consulting firm on board? I mean, a year?
To get the consulting firm on board, we're looking at reviewing the proposals or the responses to the request for proposals the first week of May, and then identifying a consultant within the month. The project itself, I don't think will take more than a year total from starting from where we're at now, and we even be on meeting on this in January. But also looking at making sure we have a good public input process so the community's involved, doing some surveys, doing those kinds of things. We've asked that specifically to be called out in any response that any consultant makes because we think that's a really important part of this process. So that would take some time as well.
Okay.
So we're looking at a process that takes us through next January or next April, you think? You're saying a year, a year from now or a year from January when you started working?
No, sir. I believe it could be next April.
Next April, okay.
Yes.
And consultant comes in, works with people, gets input from various groups and individuals, and there's probably some kind of public presentation or engagement or something like that?
Right.
And we'll hear a lot more about this as it goes.
Yes. There is also the implementation strategy as well. So it's the development or the data gathering, the development of, and then an implementation process for this branding. It is a fairly comprehensive investment, not just $30,000 for the...
$50,000.
$50,000 for the gentleman to come in the door. He brings lots of...
He's bringing us a turnkey operation, essentially.
I, yes.
Would hope.
I would hope.
Well, we've talked about this before, and we expressed interest, and we're at that same level, so I think we're still...
Well, and, yeah, and we've got the university commitment, we've got the chamber commitment, so I guess it's something for us to...
Are we still there? Are there 10?
Foot on.
Non-prioritized projects?
I think that's probably the best place. Right, yeah?
Dawn and I keep a running tab on non-prioritized projects.
Yeah, there he is over there keeping tab up as we speak.
All right, and that's subject of keeping the tab. And could Dawn send us an email just to, so we know where we're at on non-prioritized budget?
Absolutely. We will make that happen.
All right, I think we can...
Consent agenda?
Thank you.
Yes, I think we can do that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Number four, educational assistance policy revision with Debbie Klein Robertson, our City Human Resources Director.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The item under review here is the educational assistance policy. It's part of our personnel policies. It provides educational assistance to full-time employees. And there's a number of changes recommended here. Most of them are clarifying in nature. The more significant change involves having the City Supervisor rather than the department heads approve recommendations for educational assistance. And essentially, this will provide better tracking of the overall educational assistance program as well as better budgetary controls.
Can you give us an example of an educational assistance action or, you know, an example of the policy being implemented where the City Supervisor's given some permission and what happens?
As far as...
It's just an example, so like...
What kind of education?
Yeah, exactly. What kind of education? Just because we have people...
Well, I guess most currently, there's been interest in getting a master's in public administration, so the request would go through the supervisor and the department head, and then the request would come to the City Supervisor for final approval as far as the necessity to the organization for the program, whether, you know, obviously benefits the...
Right. So the employee is asking to further improve their skill set and is asking for education to figure out how to make that happen.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. John?
If I'm not mistaken, after I was elected and before I started serving, didn't we have a group of our people with, you know, the water department or the street department that had all done...
The road scholar program?
Yes.
Yeah, those programs, you've got your, call them vocational, professional, technical programs. For instance, the International City-City Management Association, I attend. The water folks attend. The American Public Work, or I guess that'd be the city engineer and the public works director go to the American Public Works Association. Bill Belknap goes to the Planning Association folks. That technical professional education is different than this.
Okay.
This is additional community college or college credit correspondence-type credit that is meant to further your education, your professional education toward a certificate or toward a additional degree. It's been utilized in the past. We see extensive use of it in the police department because of the agreement with the University of Idaho that our police officers are able to take classes at a reduced rate. We have several police officers in the past who have achieved masters of public administration or political science degrees up there, and so we're reimbursing them as long as they, number one, can show that it benefits, their work at the city benefits the city, and two, they have to have a passing grade, and they have to be on a track to complete some sort of certificate or degree. And so what happens then is they request reimbursement through their department head and then through my office.
Wayne.
What do you, what do we ask for as far as a guarantee from them on continued employment?
It's a one-year that you have to, if you leave prior to the expiration of one year, then you are responsible to pay the city back the cost of that education.
Just one year?
Yes.
Yeah, because my, that's my concern is we're reimbursing them for furthering their education, making them, of course, more valuable to us, but at the same time, more qualified to move on to another position within another city, another type of employment, and so we lose that, and so I...
And this has been debated over the years, whether there is an advantage to the city itself. And it's been determined that it is. It takes a longer time to get a degree when you're fully employed. You're not taking 12 to 16 credits per semester. Typically, you're taking one, two classes. Professional, like an MPA typically is about 30 to 34 credits, something like that. So it's going to take you a while to do that. So someone who's coming here utilizing that as a benefit and then moving on, it's going to take them three, four, maybe five years to achieve that, whereas if they did it themselves, they might be able to do it in 18 months to two years.
And so then we're asking for that one-year obligation after they've completed and received their degree?
Yes.
I think it's terrific. We've got employees that are excited about furthering their education and continuing to work here. It's a good thing. Are you the one that requested this, or were you, was it asked of other department heads saying, hey, I need some...
No, it hasn't been utilized extensively. Like I said, in the police department, it has been because of the reduced cost. But I've had several employees who've indicated that they may have an interest. So in order, as Debbie said, in order to make sure that we have some budgetary control over, there may be additional policies that come out regarding how does that affect our professional training budgets or professional, what do we call it now? Not professional training, professional... What, development? Professional development. As Dawn tells me, dogs are trained, humans are developed, so that's what we're doing. So in our professional development, how much of that will be the academic-type training versus the professional certification-type training?
One last question.
Wayne.
Prior to this change, then, it was the department head that okayed it?
The way it was written is the department had approved, and then it was reviewed in my office, and then I would look it over to make sure that it met all those requirements. We've also increased, I've talked to a couple of the folks who wanted to pursue further education. We're asking for a more rigorous application-type process and monitoring them throughout their degree.
So how's this changed, then? Is the department supervisor still has to give their okay or not?
It's just flipped now. It has to be reviewed by the department head, and the department head can submit comments. For instance, if it is a degree or it's professional training that doesn't appear to the department head, that it will benefit the city, then that still can come to me, but the department head will have the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Sounds good. All right, well, I'm...
Prior to you getting it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine with the change in the policy, I think.
Yeah.
Anytime anyone wants further education, I think it's a good idea, so...
All right. Thank you.
That can go to consent agenda, too, if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks, Deb.
Item number five, bicycles on sidewalks. Les McDonald.
Good afternoon. This is Don Meyer. Don is the Chair of the Transportation Commission.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
This year, so a new role for Don. Bicycles on sidewalks, this is something that the Transportation Commission has discussed on numerous occasions over the past three, four, five years, actually. And it did come to this group back in November of last year with a request from the Transportation Commission to get some guidance from the council as to whether or not this is something the city should be delving into a little further to somehow address what are becoming much more common complaints about bicycles on walks in the downtown business district. Obviously, we've seen a number of incidents over the years, a lot of anecdotal information certainly that has come through, people concerned about, you know, bicyclists that either come too close to them on the sidewalk or traveling too fast on the sidewalk, maybe get in the way of doors that are opening, just in some respects, creating some kind of disturbance within the business district itself. So we came to this commission, or this committee back in November, and the direction that was given to transportation was to, yes, please take a look at this and come back to the committee with some suggestions, if you have any, about what we could do as a city. So the Transportation Commission has been working on this and have some recommendations, so that's why we're here today, is to show you what those are. And I will say first off that, thank you, Tom. He pointed out that the attachment that was in your packet was actually an older version. I had an outdated one, unfortunately. So as we get started, I'd like to go ahead and send around the correct later version. This is dated March 19th rather than February 13th. Two pages instead of one. The commission approached this matter really in a couple of ways, taking a look at how best to address the issue. I mean, first off, was there really an issue? How big of an issue was it? And then how best to address it? And the conclusion generally was that, yes, based on everybody's experience and history, that it was believed that there was a bit of a problem related to this. Not all bicycles on the sidewalks downtown are problematic, but there are some that do create an issue. There was also a desire, and I think it was also expressed by this committee, that applying some kind of a, you know, an ordinance or regulatory perspective was not really the first desired option. It was, you know, let's find some other way than posting the sign that says, you know, bikes prohibited on sidewalks, ordinance over such and such. There was really a desire to avoid that, and the commission bought into that wholeheartedly and tried to identify ways that could be achieved that would be much more friendly, more encouragement, educational outreach-type approach. So the recommendations that they are bringing forward really follow that thought. Let's not start with an ordinance. Let's start with an outreach effort that encourages people to not ride their bicycles on downtown sidewalks. But also to go further than that and say, you know, don't do it in a negative perspective. Don't say dismount zone. Do it in the perspective of please walk your bikes. A more positive message. You know, and really trying to convey that this is a, on the sidewalks downtown is a, primarily a pedestrian zone, so let's please treat it as such. If you want to ride your bike on the, you know, ride your bicycle on the sidewalk, it is permissible, it is allowed, but we're encouraging you either to not do that, or if you do need to ride, ride on Main Street. It's a slow volume, fairly low traffic, slow speed, fairly low traffic volume street, and so riding on Main Street really is generally not problematic for most bike riders. Obviously, if you've got a, you know, four-year-old on a bicycle, keep him on the sidewalk. But, you know, for everybody that's older, you know, it's easy enough to ride down Main Street. So the recommendations that are in the package that they're bringing forward are, first off, set the goal to encourage the bicyclists to either ride on Main Street or to walk their bikes while they're on the sidewalks. Trying, of course, to limit the conflicts that we've experienced down in the downtown core. The area we're talking about really would be starting out, really just Main Street, between First Street and Sixth Street. So it's kind of that downtown central business section where we have the greatest pedestrian activity and the greatest potential for conflict between a bicycle and a pedestrian on the sidewalk. They have proposed, the commission, a couple of things. One is, actually, I'll jump to the second one, which is to post some signage and potentially to paint some signage on the sidewalks. So you'd have some of the typical signs that you would normally see posted somewhere in the system, but also some thought of doing some things on the sidewalks themselves. If you look on the second page, you'll see an example of one of the on-sidewalk-type treatments. Essentially, it's, you know, it can take many forms, but this is one example that was identified off of a website. And really, the idea is that, you know, when you're riding a bicycle and you're downtown, what are you looking at? If you're on the sidewalk, you're not necessarily looking up for signs. You may be looking for pedestrians and doors and, you know, benches and things of that nature, looking at the sidewalk to see if there's any, you know, cracks that you're going to run into, things like that. So you're maybe perhaps more likely to see something at ground level that's applied to the sidewalk, you know, on the edges of the downtown district. So a combination of perhaps something on the ground similar to this and some form of signage that would convey to folks that, you know, please walk your bicycle when you're in the, in the business district on the sidewalks. To help encourage folks to then use the street if they still need to ride or prefer to ride if they're passing through or trying to go several blocks, something of that nature, the commission's proposed that we use something called a shareo, which is an arrow that includes a bicycle symbol, so it's supposed to convey the shared use. So it's arrow and shared, so shareo is how they come about. We'd be painted on the street, on Main Street, most likely out towards the center line to get away from the parked cars. There's a little bit of concern about if we're encouraging bikes on Main and we have diagonal parking, you know, is the driver backing out going to be able to see that bicycle if they're, if they're uptight against the parked cars? That's a bit of an issue. So if we can encourage folks to crowd the center line a little bit, give a little more space for reaction and visibility, that certainly helps. Again, speeds are low. Actually, the bikes may actually exceed the speed of the cars in many cases. But that would be a thought is to paint some shareos there as well. These items in combination would put the symbols out there to help convey to people coming into the downtown that, you know, it's okay to ride in the streets, it's a shared facility, you know, please don't ride on the sidewalk, you know, with that encouragement. And then there would be an outreach educational-type activity. And what's being proposed is there is a Bike to Work Day on May 16th of this year, and the commission really is, likes the idea of trying to essentially have everything in place by the time we reach that date and make that day one of education where we can reach out to the folks that are biking, we're saying, hey, you know, come on down, come downtown, you know, here's the new system that's in place, encourage you to walk your bikes on the sidewalk, but ride in the street, it's marked for that, all the various things that go with that. One of the ideas that was also floated out there is when we get to that point on a farmer's market day on one of the Saturdays, we can place a shareo in the street, start putting them on the ground just before this date, and do something as simple as putting a sign out with an arrow that points down to the shareo and says, what is this? And the idea is to get people's attention. They would look at it, what is that? Well, you know, see the educational outreach. Here's the flyer, here's the table, somebody nearby that can say, well, here's what it is, and here's what it means. You know, to try to reach out to all those folks that are walking up and down Main Street during the market to see that shareo and understand what it is, not only from a pedestrian and vehicular, or excuse me, bicycle perspective, but from a vehicular perspective, because those people are going to be driving down that street on another day. They'll see that shareo, they'll think about what they saw, and they'll understand what it's there for, and so they'll know to watch for bicycles that we're now encouraging on Main Street. So that's the concept. Again, the idea of an ordinance could be brought back at some point in the future if this type of effort is not successful in discouraging the use of bikes on the sidewalks downtown. The commission's recommending we put something like this in effect and let it run about a year, gauge the success of the program, and then either continue it as is or if need be, make modifications as appropriate. And Dawn's certainly here to help answer questions if you have any or if there's anything you'd like to add.
How did the Transportation Commission rectify the problem of young kids? Let's go back to a parent and a four-year-old.
Okay.
Okay. We don't want the four-year-old out in the street. This is not an educational process for young kids, yet the parent's not allowed to ride on the sidewalk. So I know when I was, when I was your liaison, there were some discussions as to how to rectify this particular problem. Or, excuse me, we go to 10-year-olds that are on their own, not so sure we want 10-year-olds out in the street, maybe we do, I don't... My question is, how did the Transportation Commission come up with a solution for that problem?
I don't know that we actually came up with a solution per se, but I think the feeling was that a lot of folks that have children that age are going to be towing them behind their bikes in one of those little cart-type things that they hook up to the bicycle, or that they're going to have them... that they're going to have them in some type of a car seat type thing that you can clamp onto a bicycle. So I guess the feeling was that we thought that problem may or may not be a problem as far as the kid, you know, because the parents would just dismount and would still pull the kids along in whatever convenience they were in.
Les?
I guess the other thing to think about in that perspective is, you know, if you are riding downtown with a four-year-old on a bicycle, your speed is going to be very low. And generally speaking, that is not the biker that is creating an issue in the downtown core. I mean, if you're riding with your four-year-old and you're, you know, puttering along on the sidewalk, I don't think many people are going to have a lot of problem with that. It's the older kids that are getting the speed, and there's just not time to react. That, I think, is one of those conflicts.
That's why I brought up the issue of like a 10-year-old.
Yeah, and a 10-year-old, you may run into that. And, you know, most 10-year-olds anymore will go anywhere on a bicycle. And so if they choose to go down Main Street, again, it's a low-speed, you know, fairly low-volume situation. So should be a reasonable place to ride. You know, if they're going to take higher speed down the sidewalk, they may.
John?
I agree with the approach here. And in a partial response to Wayne's question, we were talking, or you were talking about an educational process, and it could be as simple as, see this sign, from here, we walk. Dad or mom gets off the bike and they walk, and as you also said, with 10-year-olds, 12-year-olds, they're going to go where they're going to go. And we could, with them, it's kind of like putting tags on cats, you know? They're going to go where they're going to go. It doesn't make any difference. But as far as an approach to sharing the street, I think we have come full circle, which is good in that it started out a number of years ago that drivers were told that there are bicycles out here, share the road with them. And now we're doing the same thing with the bicycles. There are pedestrians out here, share the road with them. And in Moscow, I don't know that we need, I agree, I don't know at this point that we need an ordinance at all. I think most of the people in our community are going to listen, they're going to pay attention, they look out for each other, and those that don't, well, they're going to have to be dealt with in a different way.
Well, and I appreciate this coming forward, and I appreciate the work that the Transportation has done, Transportation Commission has done on this for the past bunch of months on this. I, of course, as everybody knows, ride a bike, I ride a bike a lot.
I've had some complaints.
I think that probably the most, and I do recognize that there are a lot of anarchy bicyclists around. And they come around corners, and suddenly they're right in front of you, and it's not comfortable. I think both of these pieces of signage are going to be important, both the ones that are in the street and the ones on the sidewalk. I personally believe that the shareos in the street, either going down first or simultaneously, will help to pull people into the street as an intentional, this is where we want you to ride your bike. And I think that's an important, either simultaneous step or first step. And then I think it's important to also then put the pieces down on the sidewalk, because I think, you know, and the two together will be a clear message of, here you need to go at pedestrian speeds, and that makes the most sense if you're walking your bike, and here you can ride your bike like you're riding a bike. And I think it'll be really helpful if we can pull those, the bikes out into the street where they should be. That's where I ride. And I think that, I also like the idea of moving those shareos towards the center line on Main Street. I think it's a very, it's a very much a make-sense place for bikes to be in this first through six. I would actually probably suggest that that's where bikes should be, all the way down to probably down at the end where the hospital is, because it pretty much is, given the configuration of the parking up and down Main Street.
And this could expand.
Sure.
Time, but it was a starting point.
Oh, I think it's great. And I think that, I think having the shareos down, having the markings on the sidewalk are really going to help to say, better here than there. I mean, that's really the message we're trying to get to people. And I think if we, and shareos are showing up in so many other cities around the country that people are getting it pretty quickly. I was back in DC with both the mayor and the city supervisor in March, and we saw some really good examples of the use of shareos at bike lanes and some other things that were being used very actively by, well, tourists and commuters alike. And I think people are getting it. And I think, you know, we have a lot of students at the University of Idaho that come here from Boise and other towns in the state that have some of these designs, so it's nice to be able to use those here, too. So I think it's a good, I think it's a good way to do it.
On shareos, this would be our first installation in the community, but there are others in our future.
Sure.
As we're looking at the, you know, more defined bike route system, which also is something else Transportation's been working on, the series of, you know, greenway streets, shared use streets, bicycle lanes, things of that nature, we are going to be bringing forward more of this type of thing throughout the system.
Sure. Sixth street west of the power plant, where there's no bike lane, or I guess west of the sub.
Just like that, certainly.
Right, where there's no bike lane on one side. But you still want people to ride on the correct side of the road and not against traffic on the other side. So, yeah, that makes sense. I think it's a great, or you?
Yeah, I like the idea back when it was first addressed on Transportation Commission. I think it's a good, it's going to be a good project to move forward with and see how it works out. One of the other things that I think is going to be a benefit is that I've always felt that Main Street needed to have some traffic calming, and I think bicycles, sharing it with vehicles, will act to a point of more traffic calming. I just hope we don't get too many situations where we have some bicyclists going down the middle of the street at five miles an hour, holding up traffic behind them, because that could get some people kind of aggravated. So everybody has to kind of give and take on it, but I think it's going to be a good program.
I won't be gone five.
No, you never will. Ask me one more time, I'm going to open my door.
Thanks. Gary, I think we can move this forward to consent.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Number six, update to the per diem rates for the city of Moscow, Don Palmer.
It's been over 10 years since we last updated the per diem rate, and as we're moving into the 2015 budget, it'd be a good idea to revisit this. Our current per diem rates are $39 a day, and that was, like I said, last time we've done that was 10 years ago. I had Henriann pull up what our experience has been over the last year, and the average was over $46 by the employees. And so also, I had done some research on some other, what other cities do in terms of per diem rates, and my recommendation is to use the government GSA, which is the U.S. General Services Administration, as a guideline, kind of like what we do with our mileage for reimbursements for the Internal Revenue Service. So it's a good index to use. Currently, it's set at $46 in Idaho. There are a few counties in Idaho that are more than that, like Coeur d'Alene, area is $61. Boise's still 46, but Sun Valley's 71, which would be the highest. I don't anticipate anybody going there, but, except maybe Gary. He's got a...
I'm actually going there this fall.
Yeah, you've got the city manager's meeting there.
Only the top-of-the-line stuff.
So anyway, it's my recommendation to use that as an index. And for the most part, we've had a number of employees that do not have access to credit cards be reimbursed, and so they get their per diem and then find out that their destination is higher than the $39. So GSA's website does provide provisions, though, for if the actual expenditures are more than the $46. For example, there are certain conference hotels where the rates aren't conducive to the rates. So anyway, that's a recommendation I would use, and if you have any, had to entertain any comments that you guys might have about it.
Questions, John?
Well, no question, but just a comment. We're going from 39 to 46, is your suggestion?
Correct.
That is essentially the amount of a tip for breakfast, a tip for lunch, and almost stiffen them on dinner. So I don't have a problem with this. I don't particularly like it, but...
What don't you like?
Well, just...
You're not enough? Want them higher?
No, just spending money.
Oh. Well, we don't reimburse for tips, anyway.
If we don't, we should.
Actually, our policy is that we do reimburse, and with current policy, I believe, is 15%. That was when we passed, the council passed our last reimbursement specifically, because it's a service-based, it was part of our general discussion about living wage and the fact that food service professionals don't typically make minimum wage, they have, since they get some of their income from tips, that it was determined by the council that we wanted to make sure that tips were covered in accordance with general policy.
A question for Don. The, this proposed rate of $46 a day stands even if the employee is in, traveling to Coeur d'Alene or Sun Valley, as you said, where the costs are higher? Is that what you're saying?
No. What I'm saying is that there's provisions with GSA's website that they identify certain counties or cities, cities within those counties, where they would pay the higher rate, and my recommendation would be to follow that as well.
I see.
So for example, if we have an employee that goes to Coeur d'Alene, then the per diem rate would be 61.
Okay.
And likewise, the GSA has zones around Boston, for instance, I think was $71, whereas the rest of Massachusetts is 46, correct?
Correct.
So it's localized as to where they see those higher costs being the standard. So rather than, just, the intent of course is to make sure that, you know, the employees are able to live there for the time that they're there on professional business.
So, and this is the standardized rate that makes the most sense for our employees to track those rates?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
How do you, I'm assuming that it's $46 per day, and that's assuming that the employee has been at that city for the entire day. As an example, they fly in at 3:00 in the afternoon, and so they only have one meal, but $46 doesn't count. It's...
And the way that's administered is, say you go to Boise and you get in at, so you get on the flight at 8:30, 8:00, you're not going to get breakfast for that day, but a luncheon, and if you're there overnight, of course, supper and breakfast the next day. So actually, the department heads are very good, and the employees are very good about saying, okay, this is when I would normally be eating a meal while I'm on the road, or not on the road. So you don't see that abused at all.
Okay.
Good.
I think this, does this work for you? You, too?
Oh, I'm fine with it, yeah.
All right. I think this sounds good for all three of us.
So there's one?
To the consent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We can take a five-minute recess, sir, and I, there was some backup that Earl and his folks provided. I'd like to give you a chance to read that.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Can we go into recess then?
You will go into recess, and we will come out in five minutes.
Okay. That should be plenty.
Which is 3:49 on my watch.